I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some unusual circumstances. The rules for a quorum are not simple. I'm going to ask our city attorney, Alana, to please explain them to us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everyone. I see that we have a full house and a large agenda today. As you can see, this is a seven-member board, and four members are here, which does make a quorum, which means the meeting can proceed. However, for a majority, so that means a majority vote, it would have to be a unanimous vote because it is the majority of the full board, not the majority of the members present. So even if three agreed and one disagreed, that would not pass. That would not pass the variance. So there are a couple of items. Every item on the agenda is incredibly important. We know that everyone has prepared for this, wants to proceed with their building projects. If you would like to postpone, that is an option that is available to you. I will also advise that we are going into the holiday season, so there may not be a meeting next month. We don't know that at this time. But I just wanted to put everyone on notice that those are the circumstances. If you would like to proceed and your variance is denied, that denial will stand. It is a quorum. The meeting proceed. You chose to proceed in front of this board. Are there any questions at this time? Yes?
Do we need to make a decision right now?
Yes. Pardon?
I was going to make a phone call.
If you want to make a phone call, I'm certain you can do that. You start on, I'm certain that you would have time to do that. But before your item is heard, you should make that decision. All right? All right, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you said we need three out of the four?
No, all four. It has to be unanimous.
So if it does get denied, when can you go back and attempt, or is it a one-year?
It is a denial, and you cannot, that specific variance cannot be heard again. So you would have to materially change what you're proposing, and it would be heard again. So it would, if you had like, okay, I won't law school it, but you know, no one needs to know that. But that would be the circumstances under which it could be heard. Okay?
Okay, if we see new applicants come into the meeting that haven't heard this explanation, I'll ask for it to be repeated. So everyone can hear. If anyone wants to opt out and understands the holiday season, it may cause complications for December, may or may not. And we're just going by the rules. Eric, would you like to present the property owner at 1450 Gordon Road?
Minutes for the last meeting.
I'm sorry, the minutes. Thank you. Any questions about the minutes? Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, in support. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now Eric, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, City's planning consultant. Our first item under consideration is dimensional variance for a front yard driveway gate at 1450 Vaughn Road. This is the subject site located within the A1 zoning district, so these are larger lots within the community. What's unique about this particular parcel is that it has three front yards. Pay attention to the direction of the north arrow, just to give you some context here. So Barden Road on the left, Vaughn Road is the main street, and then Guilford Road on the right-hand side. So of all three frontages, the main entrance to the property is along Vaughn Road. There is no rear yard in this particular case, but our main focus for today's discussion is going to be right here where the existing driveway is proposing a driveway gate. So zooming into the site plan, again, this is the front yard. Here's the existing home on the top of the page. This pink line represents where the proposed gate will go. We dimensioned the site plan to be approximately forty-four feet nine inches from the paving lanes of the street. And I believe there is a setback dimension here, but I can't read it off the, from this standpoint, but I believe it's around eighteen to twenty feet setback there. And then in addition to that, there's a turnaround for vehicles. So that if the gate is ever closed, there's enough room for the vehicle to pull in off of the street and turn around without obstructing traffic and backing out of the driveway. Here's the setback, sorry. Eighteen point four feet is the gate from the actual property line. So going through the remainder of the plans, this existing site has some trees that have been removed as per site visit a couple of weeks ago. But the landscape plan for this project calls for new trees. So they propose a mix of twenty-foot spruce and cedar along the north portion of Vaughn Road. And then on the southern portion, there's the same mixture of spruce and cedar of twenty feet in height. So the ultimate proposal is to enhance the screening because it is quite easy to see into the site from the street when driving through the area. In addition, this is where thirty-foot, I'm sorry, forty-eight-inch columns are proposed right at the property line. Those are permissible via the ordinance. So those are in addition to what requires the dimensional variance, the proposed gate. And there will be five-foot columns on either side of the driveway that are proposed to support and affix the gate structure to. Additionally, there's thirty-six-inch boxwood hedge along, parallel to the right-of-way, and then existing twelve-foot arborvitae hedge shown here. And then in front of that, they'll enhance the landscaping with some hydrangea. And then behind the gate will be five-inch caliper hornbeam and then learyope spicata, which is like a low grass, just to help enhance some of the surrounding foliage. This is just showing the landscape plan in a little bit more detail, showing the turnaround with dimensions that would facilitate vehicles to turn around when the gates closed. But the intention here is to screen as much of the gate as possible. So this is the elevation, showing the proposed columns. They max out at five feet, which is what's allowed by the ordinance. There is a gas line that's shown on the plans, but we've indicated in our review that if your column is going to be five feet, you cannot have anything on top of that. So if a lantern was proposed, it could not go on top because the maximum height limit for columns has already been met with the five-foot dimension there. Additionally, the four-foot gate, that meets the height standard for the ordinance, so that's what they're proposing. And then the separation between the columns to allow for adequate vehicles to pass through is eighteen feet nine inches. That also meets the ordinance standard. But I also want to point out that there are three streets within the city that allow for gates, for driveway gates. Vaughn is not one of them. So we had had that conversation with the applicant early on to indicate that in order to propose this type of structure, this would require a zoning board of appeals application and consideration for approval. So I believe the applicants here who can have that conversation as to what ultimately led to requesting this particular variance. And then just to mention again, the columns at the property line that are proposed, those are four feet in height, shown here. So this gas line that's shown on the plan does allow for a lantern fixture on top so long as it doesn't exceed one foot in height to maximize the full structure in its entirety at five feet. So again, just to go through a little bit of the existing conditions, these trees have been removed, and they'll be replaced per the landscape plan. This is that row of existing arborvitae. I believe it said twelve feet in height. So it provides adequate screening as is. And then this is just the existing driveway leading into the property where the standalone columns will be right at the property line, which is essentially right where the hedge exists. And then beyond that will be the vehicle turnaround and then the gate itself. And then just getting a few different perspectives from street view imagery shows that when you're angled on the street in relation to the driveway, the angles and the existing hedge provide some pretty decent screening if there was a gate there in that location. So this is those trees. I can't verify if those have also been removed, but the landscape plan does show that there's new mixture of cedar and spruce hedge there. So that concludes my presentation. That's what's before you. The fact that vehicular gates are not permissible on Vaughn Road, looking at the dimensions through the ordinance for if one was to be permissible, we feel that, for example, the setback of the gate, the setback of the vehicle turnaround does satisfy those types of dimensions otherwise. But I believe the applicant's here to further walk through the details of their application with you.
Thank you, Eric. Would the applicant like to speak?
Hello, board members. So my name is Sabrina with Mojer Design. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the homeowners, the Barbados. And so what I'd like to, obviously requesting the gate, and we understand that they are not allowed on this specific road. But obviously, we are at a busy intersection with not only Vaughn and Barden, but also Long Lake kind of right up there. So with the busyness of Long Lake in that intersection, if there, if any lost driver that is unknown to the area, they would basically be, if they accidentally turn in that area, this is the first street they see, this is the first driveway they see. So this is where, what we've seen and what's been part of the history of this site is that they have naturally turned around in there. One point that Eric made is yes, those trees have been removed and are currently already replaced with natural screening. So to kind of further our point, I have some printout if I'm able to hand these over to you guys, if that's okay? I just want to make sure. So I have six copies of the top page and then three of the bottom documents. So what those top documents are is eleven by seventeen of basically a bunch of images and screenshots of security camera videos that of basically unknown cars and vehicles and people that have been recorded on the homeowner's security system that have pulled in via our possibly stayed for a few minutes, turned around, walked up, and there's more video recorded, taken pictures of the property. In addition to that, there is the document at the end that there's three copies of that has at least ten police records of suspicious vehicles. So obviously, this is a huge safety concern, not only for the safety, but also for the homeowners themselves. So obviously, the hardship here is not self-created. They cannot control the behavior of passing motorists. Because of the property's unusual placement at this intersection, the experience of an abnormal number of trespassing vehicles, as well as individual people just walking up as well. This request arises from a unique circumstance specific to this property and at the position of the highly trafficked intersection right there. It has them instinctively, if they make that accidental turn, or if they think that they need to turn around, this is the first one they see. Granted, this variance will not be an injustice to not only the neighborhood or the city. Obviously, there are numerous gates all throughout the city. And then obviously, the design of this, we've made sure to be a really beautiful piece of architecture that really complements the house as well as the city and the neighborhood. But also, as previously mentioned, it is completely screened unless you're right in front of the driveway. Obviously, we want to make sure that there is minimal issues with anyone driving in, but we also want to absolutely protect the safety and make the homeowners feel safe in their own house. I have the homeowner here. He'd like to say a few words.
Yep. Good afternoon. Scott Barbado from 1450 Vaughn Road, joined by my wife and daughter here. So Sabrina, thank you very much. Fantastic job. So just want to make it clear that this is, this gate is for no other reason but for safety. Not because we like how it looks, not for cosmetic anything, but it is one hundred percent for safety. Since moving in about four years ago, it's probably, I can honestly say, two to three times a week, if not per day, that we see vehicles coming in here, standing, sitting right in the front, pulling in, backing out, and leaving. And this is just from what we witnessed when we've been home, not knowing what happens when we're not even home. When my wife, so my wife and daughter did not sit outside for an entire summer. This was following an incident where they were sitting by the pool, a vehicle pulled in, drove all the way around, went through the port of crochet, went right by the garages, got out, and decided to do a selfie of themselves in the video, like with the house in the background. And they were sitting by the pool, where he didn't know anybody was there. My wife immediately screamed, where he got back into the car and drove away hysterically. So this incident can be confirmed by the city police, who all know about this. My wife and daughter did not sit outside for the entire summer that summer. This was two summers ago, the entire summer. This is no way to live, in fear of strangers entering your property. Again, I cannot stress enough how important this is for our safety. I don't know what it is, maybe the way our driveway is situated, like Sabrina explained. You pull in, you get onto Barden, you make a right on Vaughn, and it's like the first thing you see. It's not, we're not on a hill, we're flat, and I don't know what it is. What I can tell you is, since this ordinance was enacted, Vaughn Road was pretty much a dirt road before they paved it. It was peaceful, it was calm, it was light traffic. Today, it's used as a pass-through, almost as a, almost as a thoroughfare. Traffic backs up from the stop sign, so you've got your stop sign on Long Lake Road, and then you've got Barden, and then you have a stop sign on Vaughn Road. So that's only about maybe eighty, eighty to ninety feet from our property. So on busy times, it stacks up, and there's literally a standstill right at our property, where homes are hooded, parked, and looking directly at our property. So my daughter, who likes to scooter and ride her bike, is obviously not going to go in the front yard because she's scared. Another thing, since it's been paved, using your Waze, your Google Maps, your navigation, whenever you're driving westbound on Long Lake, if there's any traffic whatsoever on Long Lake, your navigation veers you to Vaughn Road. If you're headed southbound Lasser, and let's say you're leaving here, you want to go southbound on Lasser, it tells you to take Vaughn Road, like a major thoroughfare. And the same thing vice versa. If you're headed northbound on Lasser, and you want to get to, say, this area, it takes you on Vaughn Road. So it's nothing like it used to be when this actual ordinance got enacted. So if there's any home in the entire city that warrants a safety gate, any home that deserves a variance, any home that actually has a true hardship, I believe it's ours. Not other homes that got approved, for example, 311 Barden. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, 311 Barden, this way in the back of the subdivision. This is 311 Barden.
It's a new gate.
Correct.
It's last year.
Yeah. Funny you have it.
No, I don't know Devo, but I know your Devo.
Thank you very much.
I studied for it a long time.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, would you identify yourself?
Yeah, I can give it to you. So this home got a gate violation. This home may have one percent of the traffic that we have, maybe less, which is, and they have a gate. And this just happened probably within the last year, since that one got constructed. Not sure what they are, shipless, but you know, a lot of strange things are happening. You know, look at the recent incident in McComb, where a vehicle was waiting in a businessman's driveway. He came home, got out of his car, and got shot. So we're not asking for a fence around our entire property. We actually took down all those trees, like you mentioned, and we did replace them, just for more screening. And we're not asking for an entire fence around our property, we're just asking for a simple gate. And from my family to yours, I'm sure you can understand our position. You know, we just, we just ask that you please grant this variance. It's a beautiful, tasteful, safety gate designed by Mojer and Associates, so my family and I can go back to feeling safe like everybody else should.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Mr. Barbado, have you had any break-ins in your house at all since you've lived there?
We have. Now, the previous owner has had robbery. We've only been there for almost four years. No break-ins at all.
If we do grant the gate variance, what happens to the UPS guy or the Amazon guy delivering to your house?
Well, there would be a box in the front where all deliveries are left and locked up.
Is that part of the plan? A box to, for packages or whatever?
It's not, but I, I think there's a process that's established with the city for like emergency response and for delivery and that type of thing. But there's no like indication on the plan that there's something designated for that.
Emergency response would have the code to the gate, obviously, but we can make that a stipulation if you would like.
Would the city attorney like to make any comments on that?
I would just like, about the emergency services question, I concur with Eric. There is a process which the city has established for, this is not the only gate, this would not be the only gate that exists. Obviously, the city ordinance complates gates on three separate roads. So there is a process to have the code.
Thank you. Okay, we're, go ahead.
Typically, with driveway gates is you can add different types of codes, so it's not the same code you use, but like the UPS or anything can have their own code.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I just have a question relative to the precedence that's being set. When you indicated that Vaughn Road does not allow for gates, do we have any positive or negative implications from that standpoint? And then also, have any of the neighbors made any comments relative to this request?
There's been no, the neighbors within five hundred feet were all noticed of this meeting, and I did not receive any feedback.
I would like to comment on the precedence setting question. Each ZBA decision is a factual question, so you're deciding whether there's practical difficulty in this circumstance. So the ZBA is not beholden to grant this variance just because it granted a variance for a gate not on one of the three permitted roads in the past. Similarly, if this, the board was inclined to grant this variance, it would not be beholden to do so in the future. Practical difficulty is on an individual basis, and it's just up to the board to determine whether that standard has been met in this case.
The property is not fast?
It is not fast, no, but we just provided all that screening.
Can't people park in your turnaround and just walk in?
They can walk, but if somebody's walking in, you know, that's obviously a red flag, something's going on there. But vehicles are just pulling in and out, using it as guidance.
Can I just say something too? So she's nine. We've been there for four years. Usually, a kid wants to ride their bike. So obviously, in this world today, I will not let her ride around the block. So we have a big, beautiful driveway that we really can't even use for that reason. She has to be in an area where I can see her, in the front yard. And she doesn't have enough driveway where the port of crochet is to ride around there, so she'd want to go back and forth, and I don't allow it. Because again, random cars just buy their way into my driveway, and it's actually horrible. She's got a little scooter, they will not, they don't see her. I've had, I mean, I'm at home most of the time, way more than they are, and I'm in my kitchen a lot, so I face the front row. It happens more than you can imagine. And if she's on her bike or her scooter, and they're turning, they will not see my daughter. So I have, it's really, the past year, after moving in and settling in, I've noticed a lot more action. So I started making a log of the times that I was home and I was able to. But it happens far too much, and it's taken away from her, her...
And she won't do it. It's not that she's not allowed to, she won't do it.
She will come and ask me, and I have to sit there with her and make sure she's safe. And to me, that's not fair.
And the log that she made was only since we submitted, this was only like three months, four years. And you talk precedent and practical difficulty. There's no home in the city that warrants a gate like this home.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
I can ask...
Please.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Jay Wong. I'm living in the neighborhood. First of all, I don't know them. It's the first time, I didn't even know your name, and I just know, I don't, I know that this is my neighbor's house. Yeah, three years ago, I also bought a house. It's very close to number one, two, five, zero. I also want a five, okay. And my lawyer said you can have an ordinance like five years ago, four years ago, have a new ordinance. There's not a lot of gate. Yeah, but when I moved in, before I buy exactly same reason, I said Vaughn Road is too busy. I asked the old homeowner, can I have a gate? He said, oh, they don't want to have a gate because Vaughn Road has a lot of gate. So I saw I can have. Then my lawyers, I never, my lawyer asked, said no, because you have an ordinance. So but I always walk in the bottom row. So this is a new house, then like somebody two, three months ago, I walked, have a new door, oh, new gate there. I thought I'm gonna say that is that not allowed, or Vaughn Road don't allow, or which road is not allowed? I know the Grand Lake is not allowed, and last road is not allowed, which road the city allow or not allow? Yeah, I asked why the bottom road can allow a gate.
Thank you for your comments. Questions? Comments? Are there any other members of the community that wish to make a comment?
Yeah, by the way, I want to support to have a gate. It's to improve the value of the house, improve value of the community, and then also security, the biggest thing is security, yeah.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve a variance from section twenty-four dash two forty-two B four in order to allow a driveway gate to be constructed on Vaughn Road. The applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty for the following reasons. One, strict compliance with the requirements will unreasonably prevent or severely limit the owner from improving the property. Property sits at the intersection of Long Lake, Barden, and Vaughn Road, making this location uniquely high tra- location a uniquely high-traffic area. Property has been used regularly as a turnaround point for vehicles, which endangers the safety of the occupants of the property. Two, the requested variances would do substantial justice to the property owner, as well as other property owners, by limiting the number of cars which use the property as a turnaround point. Further, the applicant has submitted a landscaping plan, which will shield the gate from the view of neighboring properties, minimizing the visual impact of neighbors. Three, the plight of the property owner is due to the uniqueness of the property. The property is located in a very high-traffic area, and has experienced repeated intrusion onto the property from passing vehicles. Four, the proponent's problem is not self-created, as the lot's location and layout is not within the control of the property owners. Five, the granting of the variances will not adversely affect the purposes or objectives of the master plan. The purpose of the master plan in residential areas is to allow homeowners the opportunity to improve the property while minimizing impact on neighbors.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Not those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. Next item is a discussion of the request from the property owner at two oh seven one West Valley, for approval of a setback variance to construct a garage.
Our next item is two zero seven one West Valley Road, this is for a garage addition, um, the setback of the garage addition, um, and the landscaped open space. So the site is, um, uniquely situated, um, at the intersection of West Valley Road and the side street, which is... Thank you. Uh, I think it has another name on some of the maps.
And, yeah, Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley, thank you. Um, and so, intersection of West Valley, um, and Rathmore here, so as you can see, it's kind of a circular lot, um, and a zone A two. What's also unique about this property is that its current size does not meet the minimum standards, size standards, for lots in the A two district. Um, and so, coupled with the unique layout of the property, and the way that the home, uh, sits on the lot, um, there is some unique characteristics, um, how this particular plan is laid out. So, um, it's approximately point eight three acres, when in fact, the A two district requires one and a half acres. So, uh, applying the yard determination graphic, along the, uh, public street frontage, you have West Valley Road to the north as a front yard, and then Hidden Valley Street to the, um, southeast as a front yard, and then, the way that those are oriented, there's no rear yard, and so what's left over on the, on the site is, uh, considered side yard. So, the way that the house is, um, established on the property, um, shown in white here, you can see there's a little bit of a encroachment into the, uh, West Valley sixty-foot minimum setback requirement, so that's an existing non-conforming, uh, portion of the building, as well as down here, where the portion in pink is what's, uh, proposed, to encroach into the, further into the setback, um, but there's an existing condition shown here, of, I think I have it on a different page. Hmm, I'm not seeing it, but, there's, uh, the existing setback is, I think, forty-six feet, um, but there's, uh, the additional, the addition to the home where the garage is, is an additional five-foot encroachment towards the Hidden Valley Street, uh, property line. Here we go. So this portion highlighted in orange is the existing home, and so that dimension of this existing home is forty-nine feet, five and a half inches. So what's proposed is in red, and that's again, just the extension of this garage area here, um, and what's being asked is a setback of forty-four feet, three inches, from the property line. So looking at what, um, an elevation from the south would depict, again, this is the existing garage, and then, everything shaded in purple is what's proposed. So they're adding on, uh, a third garage door, um, and then, according to the floor plan, this area here is, uh, storage. And then, as you can see, there's a, a cupola with a weather vane at the top. Uh, we did the height dimensions, uh, verification, and, uh, the height of the home is still within compliance of the ordinance. So as you wrap around, more or less, on Hidden Valley, uh, this is the, uh, perspective that you would see, so there's no garage that faces the street, uh, it's more of a honor of the existing home in terms of its architectural, uh, characteristic. And then looking at the floor plan, again, this is the existing garage, shown here, and then the bolded area, um, is the addition in relation to the setbacks here. And then, uh, looking at the landscaped open space and the lot coverage, uh, again, it's just this minor portion here, um, further expanding or extending into the setback. Eighty percent of A two lots, um, is required to be open space, and so the existing landscaped open space is at seventy-nine percent, and then the proposed, um, increases that nonconformity to seventy-eight point eight six percent. Sorry, I have, this one shouldn't be there. So again, uh, looking back at the, um, current existing lot, uh, it's required to be one point five acres in size, whereas it's only point eight, eight-three acres, so it's substandard in terms of its size. The existing home that's on the property encroaches into the setbacks to certain extents. And then, just here, this calculation is to depict, um, how much of a substandard lot size that it is, which is approximately forty-five percent. So there are some hardships that are associated with this site. We did meet with the applicant a few months ago to discuss the plans, um, that they had, um, and it seemed reasonable at the time to consider, uh, that if what was being proposed was kept to a minimum, um, to add to the garage, there's no other, uh, direction that, uh, would be appropriate for that garage addition to occur. And so based on the orientation of the lot, the way that the house is situated on the lot, and the lot size, um, is why this particular variance is before you today.
Eric, are there other homes in that same area that have the nonconformity, uh, due to the size of the lot?
Um, I don't know that we went that extensive in terms of, um, determining, uh, that, because the A two in this area, um, it's pretty small, so it's relatively just what you see here, and then maybe a few more lots on either side. And I'm not familiar with if there's any other nonconformities based on the lot size.
Could be unique in terms of the size of the lot?
The size of the lot, and then how, for the yard determination graphic, the sixty-foot setback is a greater setback that's imposed on front yards, and so that encumbers the north side of the house, as well as the south and southeast side of the house. And so it's because of those two dimensions, that the way that the existing house sits, kind of, is a pinch point to doing anything, doing any other improvements on the property, so...
And how was the house constructed?
Sorry?
When was the house constructed?
That was my question.
Sorry?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
Nineteen seventy-nine. The applicant is here, if there's any questions?
Is the applicant here? Were you here for the explanation of our quorum rules?
Yes.
Okay, so you understand?
I do.
You have a right to defer, if you wish, consideration of your application. Thank you. Okay, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I, I don't dislike hardship, I mean, the only house in Newbury is a two cat around it. So, more of a, but, um, originally, I had my cars outside, and it's a oak forest, it's a very messy lot, um, I, we have two cat colonies up there, and they get up in the engine of the cars, that's a problem, if there's eleven cats out there, feral cats, they came from the house next door when she moved away. And, anytime that they say hail, I sit down and put my car in the garage, uh, to corner the long way from the road. Just, it's, I actually had four cars at once, and, uh, it was, uh, it was a lot of damage.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments from the community? Now we're ready for a motion.
Do you just want to, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I want to clarify the degree of variance, um, to just ensure that we have the numbers correct. So, five, five, excuse me, five feet, three inches is the additional, um, amount of space that's going from forty-nine feet, five inches to forty-four. So that difference is five feet, three inches. Um, but the actual degree of variance, sorry, um, so sixty feet is the setback requirement. They're asking for forty-four feet, three inches, uh, and so that's a total of fifteen feet, nine inches. So the degree of variance, because otherwise, they would be required to setback sixty feet. So, the, the five foot, three inches is just to give you some perspective of how much more they're encroaching than what already exists as an encroachment, but overall, if they're not complying with the sixty-foot setback, then that's a difference of sixty and forty-four feet, three inches, and I believe that's fifteen? The fifteen feet nine?
Fifteen nine.
Right, so that's the variance that's being requested, a fifteen-foot, nine-inch variance. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Forgive me, did you show a picture of the existing garage at all, or it's just...
Like an actual photo?
Yes.
I didn't have the actual photo, but, this is more or less, um, the drawing depicting.
And the driveway is gonna go all the way to the end of the structure, or just for the, uh, other bay of the garage?
The driveway, uh, is proposed, you can kind of see it here, there's an existing driveway, and then it comes this way, and I think there's a, a new addition, um, just right there, the driveway there, to access that...
It's shaded on another, there, uh...
Yeah, so there'll be an addition here.
My name is Charlie Gueda, I'm in the Skilford Architects for the architectural ordinance project, um, so if you, if you can go to that graph, that graphic there with the, yeah, so the, the, um, dark orange area here is currently, um, a piece of the existing garage that jumps out and provides storage for, um, uh, lawn maintenance care, and, um, it's an area where he has all of his, uh, irrigation controls and things like that, so that is something that we will need to relocate inside of the garage.
Is that like a shed, or...
Uh, it's part of the existing garage, it's just sort of a small, um...
Is it brick-like the garage?
It is brick-like the garage, currently, yeah, so, so that area is being, uh, removed and not reinstated, so that we don't have to ask for more of a variance, uh, which is part of why the, the, um, garage extends a few feet past the new bay. Uh, and then the area of dark gray, um, is the only area of additional, um, driveway that would need to be added in order to actually access that third stall. So that was a big part of our, uh, design with the homeowner as well, um, was minimizing, you know, effectively, we would have to have to the landscaped open space, um, and again, as Eric pointed out, the, the site itself is roughly fifty-five percent of the size, um, uh, that is required by Zone A two currently. And so, uh, that's where we discussed with Eric, you know, would it be reasonable to, um, address that as well, um, by reducing the noncompliance seventy-nine point eight percent to seventy-eight point eight, or, uh, whatever his numbers actually came to on that. And then the, uh, the rest of the driveway itself, um, is being reworked slightly, but we were not able to, to pull four hundred square feet out of it in order to, to keep the landscaped open space at its current noncompliance status, um, so that's why we're asking for, uh, slight variance to that as well.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve a variance from section twenty-four dash one ninety-six to allow for a forty-four foot, nine-inch setback in lieu of the ordinance required sixty feet, zero inches. Front yard setback, and a variance from section twenty-four dash twenty, two twenty-eight D, to allow seventy-eight point eight six percent open space in lieu of the ordinance required eighty percent open space to prevent a garage addition. The applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty for the following reasons. One, strict compliance with the requirements would unreasonably prevent or severely limit the owner from improving the property, as the subject parcel is approximately fifty-five percent smaller than the current minimum lot size required for the A two zoning district. This existing nonconformity results in setback in open space nonconformities, and makes meeting ordinance standards significantly more difficult. Two, the requested variances would do substantial justice to the property owner as well as other property owners. The existing garage already encroaches into the setback, resulting in an existing nonconformity of forty-nine feet, the ordinance required sixty-foot setback. The addition would increase this nonconformity by a mere four foot, nine inches, but would permit the homeowner to improve their home in a manner consistent with other homes in the same neighborhood. Further, the reduction in open space would be under one percent. The property has an existing open space nonconformity of seventy-nine point eight eight percent, in lieu of the ordinance required eighty percent. And the garage addition would only increase that nonconformity by one point oh two percent, leaving the lot with an open space of seventy-eight point eight six percent. Three, the plight of the property owner is due to the uniqueness of the property. The lot is significantly smaller than other properties in the same area, and has a number of pre-existing nonconformities that the property owner, owner has to work with in order to improve their property. The variance requests in this case result in a minimal increase to this existing setback in open space nonconformities, but allow the homeowner to significantly improve their property. Four, the proponent's problem is not self-created, as the lot's size and pre-existing nonconformities make it inherently difficult to improve on the existing structure. Five, the granting of the variances will not adversely affect the purposes or objectives of the master plan. The purpose of the master plan in residential areas is to allow homeowners the opportunity to improve the property while minimizing impact on neighbors.
Thank you, is there support?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion by any party? Not those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is, uh, a request from the property owner at five seven four Chays Lane, for approval of a variance to allow a setback of thirty-seven feet, in lieu of the ordinance requiring a forty-foot setback for an outdoor shower wall connected to a pool cabana. Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested that this item be postponed, and I believe he is, yes, uh, can confirm that he would like to postpone it to the next available meeting.
Able to the next meeting, thank you. Consent for that, yes? And we'll move to the next item. Board will consider the request from the property owner at five nine six Rudd Gate Road, for approval of a variance to allow landscape open space of seventy-two point five nine percent, in lieu of the ordinance required seventy-five percent open space. Thank you, Eric.
Sure, our next item for consideration is five ninety-six Rudd Gate Road, this is, um, specific to landscape open space. The site is located, uh, north, on the north side of Rudd Gate Road, uh, within the A three zoning district, um, it is approximately three point seven acres. The home that you see here in this aerial image is no longer there, um, and, uh, building permit application, uh, was in for review earlier this summer, and I believe all, uh, permits have been, uh, issued, uh, for the new home, uh, on this site, and so this is just an example pulled, the yard determination graphic pulled from the building permit review, uh, again, from earlier this summer, so you see the proposed, um, approved home in gray here, um, which establishes where the side yards in yellow are on either side, and in front of the house is the, uh, front yard in green, and then, uh, in the rear yard is shaded in orange in the back there. So our focus today is mainly on the front yard driveway. So with this approval, uh, the, uh, the project, uh, was proposing seventy-five percent open space, and that's what, um, is required by the ordinance. So any changes, uh, in terms of additional coverage is going to be an issue, um, which is what's happening in this case. So, for this screen, I have a side-by-side showing, um, the approved plan on the left, and then, um, the proposed changes on the right. So it's a little bit busy, so I'll just kind of walk you through, um, the way I have it set up here. Again, this is the approved layout, um, you can see that the, the driveway, um, is more of a compact circular, uh, location, um, the square footage of the driveway, according to the approved plan, is, um, just over four thousand square feet, uh, that's about eight point four five percent of the overall lot's coverage. So as you can see, looking over here on the proposed plan, there's four existing trees that are located in the front yard, and we'll go through some of, uh, the pictures of that in just a second, but, the proximity of this approved driveway is, um, relatively close to these two trees. But the proximity of this approved driveway is relatively close to these two trees. So the idea is to extend the driveway a little bit further back, so that it protects the root, the root structures of those two trees. Initially, this tree was, was proposed to be removed with the permit plans. And so as of right now, the approved plans allow for this tree to be removed. And that's the largest of the four trees that are under consideration here. So the, the whole point of bringing this revision back was to save these trees and to protect these trees on the front of the property. So as you can see, the condensed version of the approved driveway shown here is now more elongated, which, according to our calculations, is additional coverage that tips them beyond the, the required seventy-five percent open space. So what they're proposing now is additional one thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot of driveway surface, which amounts to about two point four percent of the overall lot. So just again, to give a side-by-side comparison, this is the approved plan. So the landscape plan showed the tree that's being removed here, which is a forty-eight point nine inch silver maple. The tree survey indicates that all the trees shown here are in fair condition. But the whole idea again is to save that tree, and so by re-
I'm sorry, is that breast height diameter, or is that circumference?
The circumference, I believe.
It's the breast height diameter.
The breast height.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Big tree.
Eric, is the width of the driveway changing from one plan to the other? It looks wider.
There may be a slight change. I'll defer to the applicant to go through those dimensions with you. But I just wanted to point out the side-by-side comparison, just where that original driveway fell in comparison to those existing trees. So by scooching it back a little bit further, there's, I'm sure there's reasons for the width dimensions. They're relatively the same, but it, it may have increased a little bit here. But because it takes up more of the front yard is the primary reason why there's additional coverage that has to be taken into consideration. So the tree to the far north is just shown for perspective. There's really no, there was no impact with the approved driveway and with the way that the proposed new configuration is shown. So this is the tree in question, the, the large one that's already permitted to be removed, located at the edge of the driveway. The property owner would like to save this tree and all the others that are in the front yard. And so we met with the applicant a couple times to discuss the approach for this. And of course, the initial response was to try and determine if there was an alternative that could be proposed for not only the trees to be saved, but also for the landscaped open space to maintain compliance. But because they were right at, right at the seventy-five percent when the plans were approved, there was difficulty in trying to find a balance there. So again, these are just the existing trees, so that's the one that's on the far north, that's not really impacted in any situation. And then these are the two middle trees that, according to the approved plan, those would be preserved. But again, to shift the driveway further back would help protect the root system of those two trees and hope for their longevity of, of keeping those on the property. So that's the basis of the dimensional variance before you. Again, it's a further reduction of the open space that's below the seventy-five percent that's required for the A3 district.
Thank you, Eric. Would you like to make any further comments, please?
Sure. My name is Roger Dunham, I'm with the Young and Young Architects, I'm representing homeowner Mr. Jason Turkish. I'm here with Josh Tobias, the general contractor. Just kind of follow-up on what Eric was explaining. When we initially went in for the perm application, there was no driveway configuration that would allow us to preserve that large silver maple. And that's roughly four and a half feet diameter, it's, it's a big landmark tree. We tried to weave around it to, it would be down the east, and each time we recalculated, we were over the lot covers a lot. We looked at other areas in the property that we could diminish on surface area, and each time we came back to drive. And your question regarding the driveway width, I think the scale of this drawn is a little bit larger than that, but in both instances, the circular drive allows a vehicle to pass a car that would park in front. So it's the narrowest that we could make it. There's no additional turnout area, it's just enough for emergency vehicles, a car in front, another desk, to be able to pass by one vehicle car on either side, actually. What really happened was is we didn't have the driveway skaked out. And when you look in at drawings and you look in at reality, sometimes there's a disconnect. And we walked the property with Matt Berger, who's a landscape architect, and his arborist. We looked at the, the drip line of the tree and, and what would be a reasonable expectation of preservation of the tree based on whether the leaves would extend. And we were so close to all, the two trees in the middle, which would be the center trees. We knew that that one large maple would unfortunately have to be removed. And we just came to the determination that it would be reasonable to come up with a configuration that could preserve that tree. And so after many iterations and working with Moack and Frau, civil engineers, and talking with Eric, Phil Swexter, and HRC, where the scenario on your right shows what we did feels a reasonable outcome to preserve the tree, preserve all the trees, move the driveway even further away, we're just touching the two trees in the middle. So even if that's questionable, then every precaution will be made during the process to preserve and make sure there's no root compaction, not only during construction, but for the construction of the driveway and any additional landscape work. The entire project, the client aspect has really done my best with variances, it's like a back-to-back thing. So if there's any solutions, and we, we worked hard, so we feel that this is a reasonable ask for the most part, to preserve the character of the neighborhood. And driving through many of the communities, but even down Wild Gate, many of the newer homes have been modeled or new construction, there's so few landmark trees that are left. And we'd like to preserve these, we'd like to keep the character of the neighborhood, we feel that it's a key to the spirit of the master plan to try to preserve these older growth trees. Because you can't find, you know, you can get up to twenty-five, thirty footers, but that guy's special. And it is in good shape, we might, again, with our arborists, just to make sure that if we were allowed to keep it, what preservation, fertilizing, et cetera, root injections could be done to make sure that that guy has about a hundred years to live. Many of the other things that more than we touched on by Eric, but maybe we have to speak to, we did everything we could to keep the stormwater, knowing that part of this ordinance for the lot covers is the impact of the stormwater on the adjacent homeowners and community in general. So all stormwater for all pavement services is either pitched to catch basements and leaching fields, or is conducted to the north, which there's an existing ravine with a stream. So on the plan, all runoff is contained outside. The pool tears, which is an impervious surface, but that, that area is surrounded by the pool and of course the residence proper. All the rainwater is being conducted to sumps below the pedestal pavers, which allow the water to drain between the joints of the tiles. And then all of that water is managed through the sumps and underground piping to the leaching field, out to the stream right this north. And then, and, and the raining falls, it's a slope, so it's naturally falling down, maybe a sheet or a log is gonna make its way in that direction. But to mitigate and diminish the risks, it's impossible, any additional impact from stormwater management that was being proposed might have to the impact of neighbors would be a strong consideration. The front side is sloping toward the street, but all of that stormwater, including the driveway, is leaching out toward the road, it's all pitched. So there's a lot of thought and care put into engineering, prior to even the consideration of the tree, but it was, we're, we're cognizant of this is a problem. And, and so we wondered to work, and then to come up with the best practices for that aspect of it. And to stand back and look at all the trees, my, what a shame, that there's a way that we can do this, that there's a way we can work around to change the approach up to the garage area, which remarkably, Eric, if you go to the first slide of the aerial of the former residence, this is, thank you. This is almost like, the new home, the program, the circular drive, the, the garage on the east side of the property, the pool and its stairs, it's basically a new improved version of the former residences was there. So we'd love to preserve what, I guess you could say with a status quo. We've only asked to remove and pull seven trees on the entire property, and those are correct, we have a footprint on the new house, or within the foundation, so they would have, unfortunately have to come. But really should keep as much contained, as far as the tree removal, to just the area of the construction activity, and leave everything else as close to existing as possible.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Now we're ready for a motion?
I'll do it. Proposed motion regarding five-ninety-six Rutgate Road. I move to approve a variance from Section twenty-four dash one ninety-six to allow for seventy-two point five-nine percent open space in lieu of the ordinance required seventy-five percent open space in the A3 district to permit a modification to the improved driveway layout to preserve existing trees. The applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty for the following reasons. One, strict compliance with the requirement would unreasonably prevent or severely limit the owner from improving the property. The applicant is slightly rerouting their already approved driveway layout in order to save a forty-eight point nine foot tall maple, silver maple. The applicant has indicated that this variance will also permit preservation of a fifteen point seven foot tall silver maple and a nineteen foot tall silver maple. The city of Bloomfield Hills strives to maintain its trees and indeed has an entire ordinance dedicated to encouraging the proliferation, protection, and maintenance of these trees and woodlands within the city. The applicant's efforts uphold the true spirit, or uphold the spirit of that ordinance. Two, the requested variances would do substantial justice to the property owner as well as other property owners. While this change would impact the open space of the property, it would maintain a large existing tree, which would otherwise be removed. Given that, given that the expansion of the driveway away from the drip line of the trees will have no adverse drainage impacts on the subject or surrounding properties, according to HRC. And that's, and that the city seeks to preserve its trees and woodlands, this variance would do substantial justice to the property owner and other property owners. Three, the plight of the property owner is due to the uniqueness of the property, particularly the circumstances which led to this request. The approved building permit and associated plans result in the property bumping right up against the A3 open space minimum of seventy-five percent. In order to both follow the approved plans for the site and maintain trees which had existed on the property for decades, a variance is required. Four, the proponent's problem is not self-created, as the location of the existing trees on the property was not in the applicant's control. Five, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the purposes or objectives of the master plan. The purpose of the master plan is, in residential areas, is to allow homeowners the opportunity to improve the property while minimizing impact on neighbors.
Thank you, is there support? Any further discussion? Not those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a proposal regarding one-eight-zero High Oak Road.
Okay, our last item for consideration is a commercial development at one-eighty High Oak Road. The site is located at the northwest corner of Concord and High Oak Roads, also abutting East Long Lake Road to the north. The site is Zoned O-one Office. And the layout of the existing site is such that it's more or less like a reverse L shape. So as you can see, there's an existing building on the southern portion of the property. And what's being proposed today is development of the vacant portion to the north, on the north side. When applying the yard determination graphic, this is an interesting layout, in the sense that to the north along Long Lake is a front yard. To the east, along High Oak Road is also a front yard. And then to the south along Concord is a front yard. So once those are established, the remainder of the lots, their lot is side yard. So everything in yellow is side yard, everything in green is front yard. So this particular project has quite a lengthy history in terms of when it first came before us to meet with the applicant in pre-submitting meetings. There is, or there was, an approved plan a few years ago for more or less a similar concept with an office building above ground and a parking garage underneath. So what the applicant is proposing in this situation is relatively the same concept or layout. You can kind of see here, this rectangular shape is the, is the ramp down underneath the building. And we'll go through those details in just a moment. But as an overall site, the existing building to the south is an existing nonconforming building in the sense that it, there's a minor encroachment to the south along Concord Road. There's a thirty-five foot minimum setback requirement there. The existing building is at, I think, like thirty-one feet. And so the owner, the property owner is proposing to enclose that area, and by doing so, that new construction is triggering a variance. So the variances before you today are highlighted in blue. They're asking for an algebraic setback variance off of Long Lake Road, so this location here. The minimum setback for the building addition shown down here in two. Front yard loading areas, so the required loading zones, because this property doesn't have a rear yard, which is where the loading, loading zones are required by ordinance, they either have to go in a front yard or a side yard. And so due to the complexities and the layouts, the, the loading zones are proposed in the front yard. And then the loading zone size, the one proposed to the north is substandard, the one to the south meets the ordinance standards for the size. And then just for reference, down here in red is what items, in addition to the overall site plan, that the planning commission took into consideration over the past few months, up to last week's overall approval of the site plan. Those items were the location, the dimension of the loading zones, the way the ordinance is written, we felt it was best that, that item also went before the planning commission for consideration. A reduction in the parking, the design standards of the new building, and for the modifications to the existing building, we took into consideration what the ordinance standards are for design concepts. The landscape plan for overall, and then there's a specific part of the landscape ordinance that talks about screening, where there's two parking lots next to one another. So there's that number five there for the southwest property line that requires attention to landscape. So there's a lot of information, forgive me, I tried to condense it down into the items that the ZBA should be focused on. Towards the end of the presentation, there's some color renderings that we'll go through just to give you a sense contextually of the way that the proposed building is laid on, laid out on the lot. But first and foremost is the algebraic setback. The property line along Long Lake Road is shown here. The ordinance requires the minimum setback for properties along Long Lake to be taken and measured from the center line of Long Lake Road. So it's not, the concept is not to measure the setback off of the property line. It's unique in the sense that you take the setbacks from the center line. So in this case, the proposed building meets that setback requirement. But when you apply the algebraic setback with the building facing that north property line, the measurement is not taken from the center line. So it's unfortunate that it has to be taken from the property line, which is a much less distance. And so that's, we had the applicant test different areas of this portion of the building, and unfortunately, it's just the portion that's right up against the property line, or that's closest to the property line. All the other test lines that were tested through the rest of the building comply. So it's just that even though the building meets the minimum setback, the algebraic setback when applied does not comply. The calculation does not show a result that meets the, what the setback should be.
What are the additional factors that go into the algebraic? What are the additional factors that go into the algebraic setback?
The factors that play into the algebraic setback are the height of the building, so there's an H value, the length of the line being tested. So, you know, the longer that this line is, the more impactful it's going to be against the property line that it's being tested against. And then the height again is just, those two combined create a massing element. So the intent of the ordinance is to address the massing of buildings up close to property lines. So in this case, we don't really have an issue with that. The minimum setback as established by the ordinance meets from the center line, but again, when applying the algebraic setback, unfortunately, it's just that one location that does not comply and so technically it requires a variance granting. Sure.
Can I ask a question? This may be inherently obvious, but when the planning commission considers buildings like this, they understand as they're going through the zoning board issues at that time, do they not?
They do, yes. Yeah, there's a lot of discussion because I, in my presentation, I lay out the, all of the, because it's a site plan review for overall, the idea is to present to them all of the different standards that are in the ordinance that need to be addressed by the boards. And so on that first screen, I had the outline of what the planning commission is to focus on and so then I also present to them what is substandard, that, parts of the proposal that don't meet the ordinance that would require variance approval once the planning commission was okay with approving the site plan. So yes, they are informed and aware of these items that were under consideration today. They understood that upon approval of, of the plan.
So can we say that they deliberately turfed it to us?
It's called punt.
Is that, is that a true statement?
Is it what, though?
They wanted us to deliberate on those issues alone.
Uh, not on the planning commission issues per se, but the items pointed out, yes. So these four items are what are identified as ordinance standards for dimensional variance request. So these four items were identified as not meeting the standards of the ordinance.
Can you show a overview of the whole area and the office building next door? Is this building going to look any closer to the street or appear to look closer to the, be closer to the street than their neighbor here?
To Long Lake?
Yeah, no, to the, the building to the west. Is it going to look like it's closer to the street?
You're referring to, is it going to be closer to Long Lake or appear closer?
Correct, yes.
The answer is no. So there's a exhibit that the applicant provided that shows what that setback is of the actual buildings and it's, it's relatively in the same character.
And their, their neighbor to the west, is that a conforming setback?
I believe so, but the proposed building's going to be a little bit further back than this building.
Okay, so they're not going to look any closer to the road than their neighbor?
Correct.
Wasn't this area a subdivision or something? There's a few houses behind it. What was the history of this? Any idea?
I don't know the history of the subject parcel, but over here, this is zoned multifamily. Here, B one is considered multifamily.
Right, but there's, yeah, there's a house.
This is where the house was, right here.
Still there and there's other houses in there. I don't know what the history of the subdivision was on there. Okay.
Yeah, further down, I'm not entirely sure, but there was a lot of discussion about if and when residential was developed across the street and just how, at least with the planning commission's consideration of the overall site plan and the details that were being proposed with their discussion of that, would there be any negative impacts of the development subject to the correlation and proximity of residential being built across the street? So, yes, that was taken into consideration with the planning commission, so. Moving on from the setback to the north, just to kind of give you an idea in a sense, this is a color visual perspective from Long Lake. So when stopped in traffic, for example, looking into the property when it's built, this is essentially what you'd see. It's kind of like a floor and a half just because of the change in the elevations. The architect is here who can masterfully explain and articulate and go through the design elements with you. But this is just to give you a perspective that, you know, based on the, the height and the length of that line being tested, it's not a high building, it's not relatively speaking close to the street, but it's, you know, a factor that had to be taken into consideration when doing the algebraic.
I see my question's answered on your slide there. I should have just waited.
It's okay. Yeah, we'll have a lot of different color renderings just to give you some perspective of, of what's being proposed here. And this is that exhibit showing the typical front yard setback line along East Long Lake Road here shown in yellow. And so this is that building to the, to the west, so it's relatively seventy-five feet back. And then this building here and then continuing on.
So they all look pretty uniform.
They're pretty uniform and so that was the whole point of this exhibit and it's actually a little bit further back. I think it's eighty, eighty feet, nine inches from the center line. So it's kind of a strange concept, the way to measure the setback, but it is uniform relatively speaking with the rest of the buildings along Long Lake. And then one other depiction from Long Lake, have some newly proposed trees and landscape enhancements that we'll go through in just a second. Moving on to the existing building, this site plan snapshot shows, bless you, in pink, where the thirty-five foot setback is in relation to the existing building. Underneath the existing building, there's parking, so there's three parking spaces here under the building and then three spaces here under the building. You can kind of see there's ADA spaces there and what that looks like in reality is this image here. So what's proposed is to enclose this area and on the floor plan, this would be like a medical use or, so it's to extend the floor plan of the existing building and to enclose this area. So since there's this minor encroachment, that any activity, new construction, to do so would require a variance. So the planning commission had some conversations and deliberations about that kind of early on, a few months ago even, and they seemed to look relatively favorably upon that just because it is an existing building, existing conditions. One thing I want to note is that this particular building is being proposed as a change of use from strictly office to medical office, so that bumps up their parking requirement. So with that in mind, we just wanted to make sure that by changing the use, there's still going to be considerable parking since the parking requirement's going to go up. And so all of that had been taken into consideration. They're actually taking advantage of a standard within the ordinance that allows for banked parking. So they provided an, a parking study that indicates that the two buildings when taken together on the overall site do not necessarily require full compliance of the parking ordinance, the parking requirements. And so with that data and that analysis presented within the parking study, that was coupled with the, the banked parking, let me see, here. So the increase in parking is being impacted by the existing building, so their existing parking lot is going to require additional spaces which are shown here. It's kind of hard to see, but I think there was twelve?
Can you comment on fire and ambulance access?
Yes, yes. I'll get to that in just a second if that's okay.
One question before you leave that slide. Is there, is there street parking allowed on Concord Road?
I don't believe so.
No, okay.
No.
And there's no parking signs out there currently?
Moving along, so again, this, second variance is to address the improvements that are proposed here in this little sliver. One of the comments from the planning commission, which was a condition of approval, was that these, these rectangles here that were once open were enclosed with brick and so the planning commission had asked that as part of their analysis of the materials and design standards of the ordinance, that those be made to look more like windows. So there's a reflective element and so the applicant was happy to comply with that suggestion from the planning commission. So that's why this slide is included to just give you some background on that. Again, this is the ground floor of the existing building. Those three parking spaces are now going to be converted into a special procedures as part of the overall medical facility and so there'd be no windows down here on that portion where the faux windows would be located. And then the elevations for this proposed improvements to the building, there's modifications to the rooftop mechanical units. I believe they're just being swiped out for new ones and so then the, the rooftop screening for that will be a five foot screening structure shown here on the elevation page.
So that's a walkway. Are the buildings connected in any way?
They're, not the buildings themselves, there's, there's a walkway between shown here. I don't know if I've highlighted that in any other slides, but there is a walkway that's being proposed. Moving on to the next variances, these would be for the loading zones, so it's ten feet wide by fifty feet long is what the loading zone is required to be, one for each building. It's a front yard location because the, the property does not have any rear yards and so because of the complexity of the layout of the, the parking lot, the proposed location of the loading zone is, is highlighted in green there at ten by twenty-five feet. And according to the application form and the applicant's presentation and discussion with the planning commission, we did get into the details of that. There's no anticipation that there would be any large vehicles for deliveries. Any fire emergency could essentially be fought from the street, so fire emergency vehicles would not have to access the property. The only larger vehicles other than just, you know, Amazon or FedEx delivery trucks that can temporarily park here would be waste disposal. So the waste trucks would pull in, access the dumpster enclosure here and then pull out. So it'd be a pretty easy in and out access for the solid waste receptacle.
Eric, so what is the general logic behind the ten foot by fifty foot requirement?
For larger vehicles in commercial districts, yeah, yeah. So if this was a use that for whatever reason did have large semi trucks, then, you know, essentially we would have addressed that with the applicant.
How long is a garbage truck?
How long is a garbage truck? You're testing me.
Less than twenty-five feet?
They're probably twenty-five to thirty feet. Again, they're not parking, they'd just be pulling in and grabbing.
Thank you.
Yeah, they would be accessing this part of the site. So it's a direct pull in from the street, direct access to the dumpster enclosure and then off they would go. So this again would just be a temporary obstruction, so we have some, you know, turning radius shown here, but otherwise, no large vehicles would be accessing the northern portion of the site. And in fact, when we get into the discussion about parking the vehicles required for this portion, the new building, it would only be the tenants of the building, it's an engineering firm as I understand it, that would have access to the ramp down. So there's some security, you know, with the gate and some motion sensors that would allow for the vehicles of the employees to access the bottom of the building, the, the parking spaces that are under the building. On top, on the surface level, this would be underneath the building, all of these spaces and then outside the building footprint would be for customers or everyday parking for, you know, patrons of the building. So moving on to the south building, this is the dimensioned ten by fifty foot loading zone, which does meet the ordinance, but again, there's not the anticipation that they would need that full area. It's just that it needed to be dimensioned in on the plan somewhere and so its location is both in the side and front yard and there is a little bit of an obstruction in terms of the drive aisle here, but again, as a temporary nature, the thought is, is that smaller vehicles with temporary unloading and loading, that it would be not a major hindrance to the overall circulation of traffic on the site plan. So moving on to landscaping, this isn't necessarily something for your consideration today, but it's just to give you kind of the layout of the land, the overall proposal. So this was presented to the planning commission because they, as part of the overall site plan, the overall landscape plan is, was under their consideration as well. So there's enhancements to street trees along the periphery and then to note here, there's a lot of discussion about the screening from High Oak because there's visibility from the street into and underneath the, the building where the parking is located. So as a condition of approval, the planning commission required the Hicks U hedge to be of a height, not necessarily five feet, but when we go through the images, you'll make more, better sense of it. But there's a three foot gap between, it's harder to explain it than to show it, so. Okay, so here. So these are the five foot Hicks U hedge. What the planning commission was asking for is that the gap between the bottom edge of the story above and the top of the hedge to be no less than three feet. So that's something that city administration and, you know, going through the permitting process, that, that specific item will be followed through.
And trying to process no less, does that mean more?
The, the idea behind that conversation was that this plane or the grade along the building isn't flat and so this is just a depiction to show that the applicant is intending to screen the views from High Oak, which is over here, looking into the property. The idea is to have this whole area underneath the building and behind it screened so that you can't see the parking activity in that location. So as we talked about the change in the sloping of the grade, the result of that conversation was to say, well, no matter how high your hedge has to be, it should always be high enough so that the gap is no greater than three feet. So that might mean that the hedge is five feet in height, it might mean it needs to be seven feet in height, so long as the gap is maintained to be no more than three feet. So that's one thing as, in terms of the documentation of the planning commission's approval and for the ZBA to consider as well in your discussions, that was a condition of the planning commission's approval. So yeah, I just wanted to kind of finish through on some of the landscaping. There's exist, the south portion pretty much will just maintain the existing trees that they have. And then over here on the, the southwest property line, this is where I was mentioning that there's, you can kind of see the layout of this parking lot over here and then the proposed parking lot on the subject site and then this is where the banked parking will be and if it's ever determined that those spaces are required based on, you know, complaints or just the need for additional spaces, that they have full compliance of the parking standards if those spaces were built. So, so again, that was considered by the planning commission. They have approval to go forward with this, but again, there was indication in the ordinance that requires enhanced landscaping along a property line that separates two parking lots. So that's what's shown here and then just the example of the species of trees and shrubs shown on the left. This would be, so there was discussion about not parking electric vehicles under the garage for fire hazard situations, so there will be signage that's posted on the building just as an example shown here on the columns before the vehicles enter the garage, that there will be no parking of EVs and there's no chargers on the site.
Is that codified in Bloomfield Hills regulations?
For EVs?
Right.
No.
Does it need to be?
That is a discussion for the city commission. It is an emerging issue, so I think that's why it has not been processed yet, but I'm, I'm sure, given the discussion that the planning commission has had on this issue, it's something for, that the city will consider.
Thank you. And again, like I said, the architect is here who can speak more to it, but when vehicles enter and exit the garage, it's controlled by sensors and so the lights shown here, red and green, indicate, you know, if a car is coming out from the bottom, that the red light for cars entering will be lit to indicate, to stop so that the car coming out can proceed and vice versa. So there is some control and, you know, process that was taken into consideration when accessing the vehicle spaces underneath the building. This again is that Hicks U hedge that again, want to ensure that there's a, no greater than a three foot gap between the than a three-foot gap between the lower part of the upper story and the hedge. And then these are just some renderings of the building, just to give you some perspective of, of the overall design here. One of the conditions that the planning commission also had stated was for this proposed roof terrace or roof patio to be removed from the plan. And so these are images that show the building with that, but just for your information and for the record, the proposed building will not have a roof terrace with hedge screening on the top. And then this is looking towards High Oak over here, and then the hedge and the down ramp. The planning commission also asked for the exposed columns that face High Oak to be of a wider width. So these were changed from, Kevin, I forget what the material was, just exposed steel? Painted steel? And so the design came back with Indiana limestone as a coating for these exposed columns. And so ultimately, the planning commission asked that these columns represent more similarity as to the ones that are further within, just to give the appearance of a more bulk in the front of the building. So these columns here. The planning commission approved the overall plan, subject to these columns being, I believe, four feet, four feet wide. What was the sixteen inches, the sixteenth inch width of these columns? So the revised plans, when they come in for permitting, will, will have those standards, those dimensions called out. And then the design standards, there was discussion about the materials being used, you know, there's certain transparency, the brick that's proposed is in keeping with surrounding buildings. But as you can see, there's some unique elements to the building with the sunshades and the awnings here. And then, of course, the obvious one, that being the building elevated above the ground. So it's a very unique site, very unique proposal. The design standards were taken into consideration, not to essentially limit, you know, design, but to encourage and enhance, you know, traditional materials, but also to touch upon some new, new design materials. So this, I believe, is LEED certified building, correct? It's a green building?
We have, we have on a zero carbon emission.
Okay, carbon emissions, so there'll be a...
Zero.
Net zero, thank you. There will be a green roof maintained on the building, but again, this concept of a roof patio has been removed from the plans.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that covers most of it. These might be a few repeats before we get to the city engineer, but I don't know that there's much to discuss with. Actually, one of the things that, you know, both planning and the city engineer looked at was where the banked parking spaces are proposed. That area currently is drainage, and so it's...let me see, gosh. So here, this is kind of a wetland area where currently water is directed...I'll let Leah speak more to it, but we wanted to make sure that our analysis of the banked parking spaces going in that area would satisfy the city engineer's requirements for drainage and making improvements there. So as I understand it, they're proposing an underground drainage improvements to handle all of the water mitigation, but if there's any questions in regards to that, I'll defer to Leah. So I think I summarized the variances at the very end. But the applicant's here, who has a lot of time and effort spent on this project and working with us, the city and the planning commission, and so be happy to turn it over to Kevin if, if he'd like, or if you have questions for me.
Leah, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I think Eric explained that they are proposing underground detention facility, which meets the city stormwater requirements, so.
Thank you. And the applicant, please, any comments?
No, I just want to build a building, net zero. We first have both of those.
First, net zero.
Just for information, the, the way retaining wall, if you go ahead, the site line, it caused the whole road down here to deteriorate. So what we propose, oh, yeah, that whole road down here is deteriorated. We're gonna, me and a neighbor, we're gonna repaint the whole thing, must I, we change the underground.
Thank you.
You know, it's really causing the road to deteriorate.
What's the timeline in completing this?
My goal is to start construction sometime in March next year.
A year?
Then I have to build the upper level building first, seven and a half, then remodeling this one, because a plastic surgeon need that surgeon right away.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Pretty thorough.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Eric did a great job of, you know, kind of explaining everything. It's a very unique site, but we, we feel that we have come to some really great ways to achieve what, what Selene did, be able to achieve, and working with Eric and HRC has been really great. They've been very helpful in helping us. We have, you know, been able to keep as much green area as possible. We have, even, even with the banked parking, which we have no intention of putting in, we need all of the green space requirements, even if that was ever to go in, that was one of the requirements for that. But this particular medical user actually will use the last parking spaces than the office user, which it currently is, is Selene's office. So we're, we're not concerned at all in terms of, of, you know, the number of spaces there, but we do have, we do have the capability to do, you know, the full, meet the full requirement, if it ever came up with a, with a future tenant of some type. This is going to be a long-term lease for this existing building, and Selene is moving his current facility into the northern building. All of the underground parking is just certain people within the office that will have access to that. The rest of the office area will, will park on grade as well as visitors. They don't have a lot of visitors that come into their, to their site, but everyone that will be using that ramp to go down would be, you know, just a handful of people, and they, they would be very familiar with that on a daily basis. But I think that we have, you know, taken great care of Long, Long Lake. We're actually going to be six, almost six feet farther back than any of the buildings that are along there. The building to the west is actually, wouldn't comply at, at this point. It's wider than our building and it's, it's, it's closer by about four feet, as well as, as the building to the east is closer as well. So we, we felt that that was a very, what we considered a fairly easy ask relative to that. We are keeping a consistent line behind that for everything that's on that side of Long Lake Road.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Do you make the motions? I move to approve the following dimensional variances in order to allow building addition to the existing building at 180 High Oak Road. One, a variance from section twenty-four dash one ninety-six W two, twenty-four dash one ninety-six W three, to allow an algebraic setback of eighteen feet, in lieu of the thirty-two feet, four inches required by the setback formula along the property line. Two, a variance from section twenty-four dash one ninety-six to allow a setback of thirty-one feet, nine inches in lieu of the ordinance required, setback of thirty-five feet for an addition to the existing building along the south property line. Three, a variance from section twenty-four dash two thirty-two A to allow a loading area to be located within portions of the front and side yards of the south building. Four, a variance from section twenty-four dash two thirty-two B to allow a loading area of ten feet by twenty-five feet in lieu of the ordinance required, ten feet by fifty feet to service the new roof door. The applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty for the following reasons. One, strict compliance with the requirements would unreasonably prevent or severely limit the owner from improving the property for the following reasons. First, in relation to variance request number one, the algebraic setback analysis measures from the north property line to each test, test line, a single test line, quotations, test line, A, in quotations, parallel to the north property line, does not pass the algebraic setback. Given the scope of the property, the particularity of the algebraic setback analysis and the limited nature of the test line failure, strict compliance to the ordinance in this case would be unreasonable to prevent the owner from improving on the property. Second, in relation to variance request, parentheses, two, parentheses, it is reasonable in this case to permit to continue, to permit to continue a, if I can say that's worded properly, but a pre-existing non-conformity, as failing to do so would severely and unreasonably restrict the property owner's ability to improve upon the property and expand and update it in such a way that would allow a modern, accessible medical and non-medical office building to be created. The current building is setback thirty-one feet, nine inches from Concord Road. The ordinance requires a thirty-five foot setback. The proposal is to set the addition back thirty-one feet, nine inches from Concord Road, which would align with the current building. Third, in relation to variance request, parentheses, three, parentheses, it is reasonable to permit a loading area to be located within portions of the front and side yard. The subject site does not have a rear yard, and thus, strict compliance with the ordinance standards would be unreasonable to prevent the owner from improving on the property. Finally, in relation to the variance request, parentheses, four, parentheses, it is reasonable to permit a ten-foot by twenty-five-foot loading area in lieu of the required ten-foot by fifty-foot loading area, as there will be a ten-foot by fifty-foot loading area for the south building, semicolon, the ten-foot by twenty-five-foot loading area will service the north building. Given the joint nature of the development, it is reasonable to consider the fact that there is a compliant loading area at the south building. The applicant has stated that no trucks larger than FedEx, UPS, or garbage trucks will access the site. Two, the variance, requested variances would do substantial justice to the property owner as well as other property owners. This project would revitalize and expand the existing site, updating the existing building with elements such as a forty-two-hundred square foot green roof, significant improvements to the landscaping, including two hundred and thirty-six shrubs, eight tufts of ornamental grass, and flower beds. Improve lighting around the exterior of building and parking lot, which complies with the city's ordinance standards, and provided the city a detailed parking structure, or study. The applicant has also agreed to enter into an agreement with the city to construct additional parking area, including landscaping and stormwater improvements. If the planning commission determines there's a demonstrated need for additional parking, overall, the proposal would radically improve the condition of the site for not only those businesses which occupy the buildings, which will occupy the buildings, but the surrounding area as well. Three, the plight of the property owners due to the uniqueness of the property. There is an existing non-conformity on the property, which limits where and how an extension can be added. Additionally, the property does not have a rear yard as defined by ordinance, which inherently creates challenges for placing required improvements, such as parking spaces and living areas. Four, the proponents' problem is not self-created, as the size, existing non-conforming structures, grade, and lack of a rear yard are inherent to the property. Five, the granting of the variances will not adversely affect the purposes or objectives of the master plan. The purpose of the master plan in residential areas is to allow homeowners the opportunity to improve the property while minimizing impact on the neighbors.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you, how is that last relevant? When this is not residential?
What was the last?
I will answer that question. That is a required, a requirement of the city ordinance to find that the purposes of the master plan is to allow property owners to improve upon the property while minimizing the impact to neighbors. It should read property owners instead of homeowners in this case.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. With that amendment, is there support?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, thank you. Let me just ask the committee members just to stay behind. We're not going to talk about any property. I want to talk about our process. It'll be an informal, five-minute discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful building.
May things adjourn.